Seven o'clock. Okay, it's seven o'clock, and we call the building to put in the board meeting order. Um, we'll have to do a roll call. Uh, item two, I look for the rule of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion second, any additions or questions? Any non-hall of favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carried. Item three, public appearances of citizens comments. We have one, and I'm assuming you're from.
Town or country.
Town or country, so. Okay, moving on to item four, who votes the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, there are motions in the second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carried. Okay, item five, new business is item A is all the operative license. B is alcohol beverage license. And C is miscellaneous license. Does the board want to do that all involved, or do you want separate?
There any reason not to approve this on mass?
No, we did this, um, there wasn't warm enough people at the, uh, public works, but Jack had no issues with AB or C.
And I'll move the approval of item A, B, and C, second.
Okay, there are motions in the second, any further discussions? Any non-hall of favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carried. Okay, item D, consideration discussion for thought improvement grant application for six hundred first street. That's Hudson High. Byron, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, so, um, you may recall that, uh, the board approved revisions to the thought improvement grant program that allows applicants to do the work themselves. So they would submit a detailed cost estimate on their project, um, but they would not, you know, be reverse for labor costs if they're doing the work themselves. So this is our first application that is doing that. He's proposing to, uh, replace trim on his building. Um, so the total grant request is three thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and two cents. He provided a detailed cost estimate, um, really at least all the requirements of the grant program. The PDA reviewed this a few weeks ago and recommended approval.
I move to approve. This grant, okay.
Oh, second, I was wondering what the fifty-five cents is.
I think that's just how it adds up.
Okay, we have motion in the second, any questions or concerns? Any non-hall of favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carried. Item E, consideration discussion resolution twenty-three, twenty-one, appointing authorized representatives to file applications for financial assistance from stable account and environmental improvement fund. We have a gentleman here from town or country, do you want him to speak at this, or?
So yeah, the next three items are, uh, related to this project. Brian, I don't know if you want to introduce it?
Sure.
Sure.
My name is Brian Burkes, we've, uh, met on a couple of occasions.
It's probably not going to be up anyway.
Good on you. Uh, we've been helping out with, uh, layout and funding applications for the proposed reservoir on the east. From the valley. Uh, what's in front of you tonight is all related to DNR funds. We still have the, uh, congressional earmark fund, that'll be due first. But for tonight, it's the drinking water fund, which is a program through DNR. Uh, that fund is, it's as probably every year, but, um, on recent note, it's the way that states have been following their money from at DIL. The bipartisan, Dr. Schuman, Washington, from, uh, that. Uh, that's how I get it. So we've got a pretty interesting thing here, some resolutions in the contract that DNR has seen for us to submit that into the application here on June thirty. Um, two resolutions, and I can't remember the first.
This one is the appointing authorized representative.
Perfect. Uh, so for that one, all we're, uh, looking to do is establish someone in your comfortable, uh, day-to-day signing, uh, some applications, signing the disbursement requests on the project slide. So the, uh, the residents set up for Bill's president, and knowing that's okay, uh, difficulty, but it could also be more. That's the first one, is just establish somebody that can sign on the application.
Uh, I would move to approve the resolution twenty-two, twenty-one, second. Is that for Bill's president doing that? Yes. Okay. Well, it either had to be myself, or Lauren, or somebody had to be designated in this resume.
It doesn't make you. It, it doesn't make you.
Okay. Okay.
The resolution says for the president.
Yeah. Okay. What am I thinking?
I didn't mean.
Yeah, it could have been, it could have been any one we typed, please. Could have been you, you could have.
But I move to approve the resolution.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in the second, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carried. Uh, item F, consideration, a discussion resolution twenty-three, twenty-two, declaration of official intent to reimburse the visitors for the drink, drinking water loan program, project.
November ten, uh, this resolution is also required by DNR. It establishes a couple of things, just to make sure every community knows, know we're doing that. Uh, and where that could be. So this resolution is stating that you understand the state drinking water fund, the payback funding mechanism, where it's a vulnerable, that it's still attached to its experience cost and then submit for labor persons. So you will need, uh, one of the projects that's going, to make sure you've got cash on hand to pay for stuff until the loan dollars are closed, because the loan is right now. State, uh, further states that the, the project itself may approach two point eight million dollars. Uh, that is the absolute high end of Cadillac everything, for probably more than fifty percent of the market. As the design discussion with staff, um, that highlighted some of the controls that they may live up on to do. Those decisions will be made, and so, um, this also assumes that the congressional money somehow disappears and is gone. Uh, DNR recommend, you also recommend applying for the full amount, because that goes, you know, use it impossible to catch the budget. So the resolution is simply, we're aware of the programs, a loan-based program, we're aware we may have a cost before we get reimbursed, and we're aware that the project, the total cost could burst.
You've got in here the, uh, expect to issue taxes at bond, what if we expect to do a bank borrowing?
You can certainly do that as well, um, this is set up for at the moment. Uh, bank borrowing would be not using this program.
Why not? Uh, why do you care, why do you care where we get the money?
Uh, I would advise the community to get it to those total costs that they're in your cash flow. Uh, the interest rates that the DNR provides are generally around two percent.
Oh, this is the DNR back?
Yes. So if DNR does, they will, they'll aggregate it to all of the communities, um, and.
So they enter them loanless money back, we don't have an individual transaction?
You'll have a single transaction with DNR.
Okay.
Uh, the money actually comes from.
Yeah, I, I'm just over still with the president.
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion or a discussion, or?
To approve the resolution twenty-three, twenty-two, to declare the official one cent reimbursement for the expenses for the. State drinking water loan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? None, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carried. Item D, consideration discussion between building, building, and town or country engineering, Inc., for professional service.
This is actually, uh, a different one of a proposal that was, uh, already presented to the board back in twenty-twenty-two, uh, when we first started work on the project. Uh, that took the form of what's in your tax, the nine credit tax and A, a scope memorandum applying what, uh, you were proposing to do in the proposed cost, just for, uh, forty-four thousand dollars. And we've been working on that agreement, uh, since. However, uh, in order to qualify for DNR funding, of which engineering is another four cents, it must be an actual contract, uh, so now, uh, that is in the. So, uh, this does, it's a tax on our sort of form contract in front, um, which is what we need to have our projects. And a lot of. Lots of engineering, that would be four cents, what's in. The amount in the scope there.
Is there anything in here that's not standard to your organization?
No, out here, certainly not.
You've got a five inch? Final?
What, seven or eight inches?
Things like the rhythm modest amount. Uh, would, would you be better off if you go to the chair and sit down?
Well, all right, I've got a couple pages on my, uh, you know, please.
Um, it's, it's, it's a five inch. It's, it's, um, it's limited in liability to fifty thousand.
Correct, so that's our, that is our interim agreement for a small contract for us. Uh, this is for preliminary engineering.
Okay.
After final design.
Okay, okay, so is that the two point eight million dollar project?
No, sir, no, no, uh, so this, all we do is design it, um, and help with those construction. Uh, your, your actual construction contract will be with the tank, any debt, or the tank, whatever. Uh, our next steps, pending approval tonight, uh, we will submit your loan application to DNR before the period. They'll find out roughly October, uh, if you qualify for just loans or smalls, or bulk loans responsible for. Sometimes you may now and then use mid brooks to work for final design, final engineering contract. Okay, separate document, uh, and that will have different moments of liability, that's sort of a final stamp, seal of design. Certain, around, if you want to protect yourself, so this is just for preliminary.
But this, I, I understand that this, you are liable for the design.
Where?
You, you do the design, right?
We do, but we're only under contract for the preliminary.
Only what?
Only under contract at the moment for preliminary. This would not, this agreement would not go as to.
So the, the, the subsequent agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I move to approve, uh, agreements between building, lawyers, and town or country engineering, or professional service. In a second, further discussion? Any non-hall of favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, most carried.
Thank you, Brian.
Any objections? And it's totally based on the, I think, the seat about, uh, and, um, it's not planned.
How can I coach you?
No.
Okay, item H, consideration discussion resolution twenty-three, twenty, setting twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-seven resource recovery fee. Lauren?
So there's a memo on fee ninety-seven that kind of outlines the thought process behind it. So, um, staff, so, I guess, back me up a little bit. So last year during the twenty-twenty-three budget process, the village board passed a resource recovery fee. This fee helps pay for these curbside recycling. Um, kind of the intent of the fee, or at least how I understand it, is charging what we get charged, the village gets charged from health care. It was kind of like a pass for the fee. So we, that fee was passed, so the, the current fee is two dollars and seventy-two cents a month on the utility bill for, for residents who receive, uh, curbside recycling. So the village budgeted approximately thirty-three thousand dollars in expected revenue, and as of June twenty-twenty-three, we only have nine thousand one fifty. Uh, so we investigated a little bit, and there are kind of two main reasons why we're not getting the expected revenue. The first is that we reconciled the list that Palatieri provides to all of their customers with our utility customers, which is more complicated than you would think, and not just like apple to apple. So staff went through and compared that, and we realized we are missing some customers. So those are getting added, forget how many that was. Um, over thirty, yeah, thirty, and the reason those were missed is they're listed under commercial, but they give residential bits. So if we hold residential, they might include it, and we can do like that. So that will get added, and that will involve some of it. The other thing is that we're not currently charging what Palatieri is charging us. So Palatieri is currently charging three oh five per month, but we're only charging residents two cents each year. So what I'd like to propose to the board is to update our fees for this year to match three oh five, so that we can at least recover those costs. Additionally, Palatieri provides what their rate increases are for the next five years. Um, so I thought, you know, this would be a good time, maybe just set that for the next five years, we don't have to deal with this every year. Um, it's ten cents, uh, each year in increase, so it's not going to be rate, but thanks for residents, I don't think it's not a huge increase. Uh, so this resolution, if you would like to adopt it, would establish moving, or starting in July, three oh five per month for, uh, for side recycling for residents. Uh, and then it would increase to three fifteen in twenty-four, uh, three twenty-five in twenty-twenty-five, three thirty-five in twenty-twenty-six, and three forty-five in twenty-twenty-seven.
Per month?
Per month.
Why don't you just, I mean, it, it would be, it strikes me as either pretty modest number, and times whatever. But if you've got to go through and adjust every one, why don't you just cut to the chase and do three fifty?
Well, that's a lot.
Five years.
I mean, we're not even halfway there to including the cost.
Or some number of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going back in and pay recall.
Well, I think we want to try to match it as much as possible if we're not overcharging.
Okay, I'll let you do that one year.
Yeah.
Well, the reality is, we're spending more with management time than we are adjusting a rate.
Sure.
Do we foresee being locked in Palatieri for five years?
Yeah, we have a contract with them.
For five years.
Yep, so this is, this will be the rate for the five years.
So I've calculated, if you do those two things, that it's going to cover that twenty-four thousand missing?
There's a couple caveat, um, the one thing that Palatieri does not, is not including that rate, and they won't lock in, not surprisingly, is the diesel rate that they charge us. So, uh, we get charged diesel, and that gets split fifty-fifty between trash and recycling, so that would not be referenced with this. Um, the other caveat with this, we were mentioned not overcharging. We were warned, I think the reason this all happened the way it is, is we were warned by our auditors and by Bill Morgan last year that this cannot turn into a profit-based fee, um, and more deliberate research, and I think the technical, technicalities of it is that if we, any money we make of this has to be put towards recycling, is that correct? Yeah, you know, we did this in Sun Prairie, and we would overcharge a little bit, but put it towards other.
But what, what's the definition of overcharge?
Overcharging the amount that Palatieri is charging us.
So they don't let you, so your stuff is not valid, your work is not valid?
Well, I think that would be something to possibly consider with, you know, auditors.
But you, 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 you're sort of figure that out, but the reality is, you talk about six cents, right?
Yeah.
Per customer, per year, I mean, it's a nothing burger, we use that money. But less of the stamp. So if it's less of the stamp, I know what, I know your worth worth of the stamp. Your private register would maybe be three stamps.
Thank you.
Oh, we're behind beginning.
Oh, we already lost.
Well, well, no, we didn't, we didn't lose twice on that, no, I, I.
Well, we're six.
Right, right.
We're halfway through the year.
Anyway, we're, we're, we're off, we're off. Back up, tell me step by step.
We budgeted.
How we're behind by twenty-seven thousand dollars.
We're not, we budgeted total for the year to bring in about thirty-three thousand dollars revenue.
Thirty-three.
Whereas currently it's just under ten thousand. We're halfway through the year, so.
All right, so we're still.
Seventy dollars behind.
Eighteen, it'd be under about fifty. We're still a little under.
No.
Because the new deal's starting in July, so July to December, we'll be charging the correct fee.
Well, we'll be charging the fee that Palatieri charges for parts of the pickup that will not actually be the cost. So there's still going to be extra cost.
So the money we lose is from January one this year to.
To the back.
June, yes.
Exactly.
Carl, which is about seven thousand dollars, which I think we should try and make up.
Is that the new math?
Well, that, all right, how did we?
We lost money.
Two dollars and seventy-two.
So we were looking back at this, and frankly, I'm, I'm, look back at my emails with Carl, and this is something that he was familiar with in Torrey Hills and kind of looked into. I think what happened, because some of this got done after I left on, on leave, because that's when the, the fee got established in two seventy-two last fall, but then the actual implementation of list got established earlier this year. Because that's going to need to happen until end of February, I believe, for January billing. I think what happened was, we took the total cost of recycling in twenty-twenty-one and tried to figure it out that way, divided by how many customers we saw were picking up. We didn't understand the Palatieri data at that point, I think is what happened. Um, I think that at one point it was higher, and we, we knocked it back, I think I sent the bill to them. It was over three dollars, and for some reason they got it back to two seventy-two. The board wanted to decrease it, or we weren't sure exactly what had happened.
So my question is, is why can't we just charge four dollars, cover all of this until two thousand twenty-seven, use that extra money to fill in the void, and adjust for fee coverage?
Your, your biggest, I'm, I'm, your biggest problem is the list, right? I mean, when we moved from one house to another, it was three or four months, whole cars are not on the list.
Exactly.
And practically won't make a barrel.
You're exactly right, Tom, it is, it is just.
The list, and that do does, I mean, that, that costs.
Right.
Although, I, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
If, if we are in violation, or if we, you know, so if we use that money for those issues, we cannot be in violation again.
I, I would like to double check on that, just given that our auditor said that, uh, but I was going to say earlier, in Sun Prairie, we, you know, we did that. We charged more, and we used it for prop collection, for other recycling-related items, which was nice to have that fund available for those things.
Oh.
And I know last year we had a session at the level, we were talking about increasing quite a few different fees, and I know there were, there were some concerns about increasing or adding too many fees at one. Um, I know that was part of the discussion, not because of recycling fees, but I also think that's one reason that it was decided to charge what we saw Palatieri was charging us. But I don't want to favor completely our time as well.
I guess, for sure, no, we don't have money.
Yeah.
We're going to give you a glass jar with a number of dimes, and if anybody comes in and complains, you reach into the glass jar.
Just a little less, sorry.
Would you that, would you bring this back with, uh, be it four dollars, or something like that, would that be?
Would you?
Well, I think we want to try to establish, so we can get in the building to get to July.
Yep, do you want to pass this now, and then you could look into it, maybe at a future time you could increase it again?
Or, or they could.
Or they could. Better than saying on now.
We're authorized with a rate, or revise that to, to, that number to be rejected as we need to recruit the seven thousand dollars that we've lost. And the diesel costs, and if that ends up, the final number is up being four dollars, she has authority just to change that number, what we're, we're authorizing in the resolution, this is what we want to recruit, diesel is what we want to recruit, your time is what we want to recruit. Then we don't have to do this twice.
So we're giving you the oriental.
Use those computations, and, you know, if you have the person who's got it, you're fine.
I mean, you'd have to talk to the auditor, please.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to.
How, what, where's the seven thousand?
We're halfway through the year.
Okay.
And halfway.
Why are you still looking at?
Well, roughly halfway through.
Thirty-three, yes.
Divide that by two, so we're halfway through the year.
Okay.
That's roughly sixteen thousand five hundred.
Okay.
And we've got nine thousand of it, so. You want me to? Okay, right?
Yeah.
So whatever that difference, could work through you.
Yep, and we would, we would correct it going forward, and we definitely were correcting it through the computer.
But, but you.
Yeah.
Or.
I know, I'm trying to think the best way to do this, I, it's a little wonky to, if you're setting a fee, you should have probably a very specific resolution that says exactly what you're setting. If you want to revise the resolution to four dollars, and then we check with our auditors, and they say, no, can't do that, we could, I don't know. I'm trying to just think of the process, right? The only thing that we noted is, if we come back with this, we won't be able to increase it.
I, I, I remember this kind of detail when we were stringing, uh, electric wires, and we had, we had all accounting thing just for what was one whole work. I mean, I'm, I'm conscious that we can't just really, really make this stuff up, but just make it more elaborate, you know, you're, you got, the time goes into the list, estimated, you know, twenty-two hours, you know, um, because tracking that list is a big time deal. I mean, people are moving all the time, right? Rental, stuff like that, people buying and selling houses, and they never call you and say, make sure that my garbage collection list is current. That's the last thing on their mind.
Sure.
So calculate some number there, I, I agree you ought to have documentation, not the arbitrary.
Sure, well, and I will say Palatieri handles a lot of that for us, so it, I mean, there is time in the administration aspect of that.
What, a post for one meeting, or no?
The only issue is that is that it would not run back for July, because July really will come out before our next fee. Joe, did you have something you wanted to add?
I think you should do like what you did in Sun Prairie, because remember, DNR went out to our herb site, and now we want a license for compost, and that's going to be a hundred and some dollars probably a year, and stuff like that, which is a recycling piece. So I would definitely make it four dollars now and right now, and then work it later.
You mean work it up, or is it later?
If we have.
And, I mean, we're, I, I don't know enough about recycling, we have far, that's really what can be paid for with that money. I, when we went through this the first time, I really had the impression that it was solely the fee for picking up those cars. I didn't know until, like, the door, and in Sun Prairie, they were using it to pay other costs. So be sure that it can be used for our line too. I agree, it should be used for that. So any other?
Another issue is that, you know, I did not know about the vehicle cost, and then at the last meeting, Joe talked about the violation at the dump, and that we have some expenditures there, because we are in violation, so, I mean, four dollars.
Hold it with a blank.
Four dollars is not even a ton of trouble.
You fill in the blank?
If you, if you, this is okay, I think it would probably best to just pass the current resolution, just upping it to current Palatieri rate. We'll do some investigation, we'll bring it back, if we can increase it more, we'll get with that. Our next meeting is July, so if we can bring it back by then, and for some, I don't know, I'd have to chat with Beth, um, when she has to have all that information, um, over to our, our billing processor, but if we can, we'll do as much as we can, yes, yeah.
So. Second. Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussions? Any non-hall of favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so Seth first, of all.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just want to investigate that one more.
Item Y, consideration special, village hall office, culture on Friday, called at eleven, twenty-two, twenty-three, till noon till two P M for summer employee gathering. Order Delta, this is your, uh.
Uh, we got Kelsey, has been organizing a summer employee gathering on August eleventh. Uh, we'd like to be able to close our offices during that time so that all employees can, can stay. Uh, the library will stay open. Um, it's just our, you know, village office. Be closed for those few hours so staff can hang out and we can tell them how much we appreciate them and just enjoy the summer weather. So it appears that this is something that the village did not a decade ago for staff. Um, based on old pieces of paper that I found. But I think it would be a great way to bring all of our staff together, because sometimes you don't have enough to see each other either. Have that conversation between department.
Good idea. Do you have any more comments? Will the officers, Freddie or Thorpe, walk the two?
Second. Okay, we have a motion second. Any questions? You have none on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Kennedy considers such agreement to offer village employees liberty, national life insurance policies.
I'm concerned about that. I, I would both agree to decline. Among other things, we gotta compare Liberty National to State Farm or whatever, in terms of whether it's a good or bad deal. My experience with this is, this is just a, an access point so we can come in and talk to employees. We did this once with cancer insurance. I got the guy with everybody for two weeks, you know. Um, I, and he's doing his job with Liberty. And then of course, the third point is there are agents now. And why should we favor one over the other? That, it's just, I'm, I'm not sure what the demand is for this. And then the other three things.
Yeah, so we were approached by Liberty National, um, it, Kelsey and I kind of reviewed their proposal and it's, um, there's no requirement for the village to say anything. It's just a traditional benefit for employees to take advantage of. Um, while also getting free benefits from them by just saying, we offer to employees. Uh, so I think I mentioned in the memo, they provide, uh, a family wellness free personal benefit and a medical discount card. Um, so basically, I mean, a free benefit to employees. We thought it was kind of a no-brainer, uh, a lot of the.
Well, Liberty National lives. Are current carried?
No, so this would be in addition to the life insurance that we currently provide. And it wouldn't, it would not conflict with any current EPS benefits that we offer. That was one of my very first questions.
Well, I don't agree with, uh, I think we should. There's a bill.
We have this, um, veranda, um, and this was offered to us as well. And no, no one else came in. They just keep them signing and have, um, you know, have any benefits offered here with no cost or deny this.
But what if someone else would now offer a better deal?
But that's.
What if someone else offers a better deal? We save it.
It's just a free, you know.
Well, nothing's free, but.
No, but I mean, it's.
I'm just, I'm just saying that maybe we should just wait on it. And, um, solicit other carriers?
Uh, God gave a good point there.
My only question was listing other carriers, because I'm just not sure what we'd be listing for, because this is no obligation to the village.
I think probably soliciting for exactly this. And if they say, oh, no, we can't touch that, then fine, we'll come back next month and say, great, well, stay cool.
We already offered them.
We do this, yeah. I think the, the no-brainer part that Lauren was mentioning that we saw was the, on that first, on page one oh one, the no cost. One through four, one through ten. There's other many tallies around that do the same thing. And it's, for example, for me, I have up insurance to the village, so I wouldn't probably be interested in taking any through the program. But if they're gonna give me back seventy-five dollars
Yeah.
per family member a year to get what we're supposed to.
I, I, I would tend to agree with that, maybe meet in the middle. Because we've offered, we've allowed people to put in and talk to employees before on their own time. I, I wouldn't want specifically to extend that we're seen as, um, backing this, but just allow them an opportunity if they want to.
Right.
Sign up on a sign up sheet. Take some time off on their own, not on village time. And listen to the spiel. I, I wouldn't solicit anything from anybody else unless you're updating the employee policy and, uh, whatever you're already providing to existing employees.
And we are, I mean.
Yeah, that's totally reasonable. I think that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, you can sign up for it if you want and no one comes to you and, uh, it's just an option.
Have to do it.
Maybe, maybe a resolution that, uh, that, uh, while we're doing the state, um, pretty clearly. The decision is not set. The one way to.
Yeah, I really feel only, I guess, obligation of the village is setting up a payroll deduction for it. So we would, you would scream it, but like we already have, the deduction this way.
It's just like changing your home.
Well, not, not.
But it is. I mean, you're, you're right. It is minor because it's already.
Did they, did they explain through the, the employee engagement process? Most important part of successful, whether the goal was a hundred percent participation.
I think, I think doing that by that, with employees coming and listening to their, what they have to offer, what I gathered from that. And maybe we've been, represented and all that stuff. I mean, I, to be perfect, I was with you, I was pretty successful at this. Um, Lauren, I got with her, I asked her what the catch was, um, why they're just gonna give me free money and I'm not gonna take the policies. Um, and she said that they're successful, that people do take the policies, why they're easily missed, but also they get government funding. That they have to then tunnel back through, one of the ways they tunnel back through is by offering these no cost discount cards and wellness benefits.
How was your health insurance here?
Amazing.
Yeah.
I agree.
Here, yeah. A lot of this stuff is covered by them already.
Yeah, so, so EPS, so through court, specifically what I have, you, you go through different steps. You can get a hundred fifty-dollar pizza gift card for the wellness benefit. This will all be in addition to that. I even have two, for example, that says one physical per year. Well, our insurance, every plan we offer covers one physical per year for everybody a hundred percent. So I said, well, that doesn't affect me. She said, nope, it actually does, because we will just send you a seventy-five dollar check per family member. Even though insurance covers your whole cost, just for a physical. I specifically asked, because I thought, yeah, you know.
So, so where are we, where are we going on this?
I guess I would also mention, like, signing on with this doesn't prohibit us from choosing another life insurance, local life insurance company. They wanted to work with us as well. Um, so I mean, we could offer multiple options to our employees, and I don't think this is something that's for working with others. Just as another benefit to offer employees if they wanted to take advantage of it.
I, I don't see. What's the benefit?
That they can sign up for additional.
If they were a physical, they get a check for seventy-five dollars.
So they can do that, ain't it?
No.
No, they, uh, this is a.
You have to offer it in order to take advantage of it.
You're getting free, you're getting free money, but you're giving them their, your date of birth. Uh, and some other personal information.
There is no free money, okay? I'm just saying, uh, if this is just giving Liberty National the right to contact our employees, that's one thing. But if this is meant to be construed as ability and, and that offered, uh, to our employees, then I think it should be opened up to the market. I don't, I don't see where these people have a, an in outside offering pie in the sky to the village. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, uh, is there deadlines?
No, there's no deadline.
Well, then, I would, I would suggest we table it, or whatever the procedure is, till the next, at least the next. See if anybody else wants to. Did you go over this location checklist there? Where at the bottom? Provide locations, because.
So we mentioned that.
These are accessible to all, table shares, power, et cetera. That, this is my script. They were setting up, they're, they're selling more than just this. When you're here, there's more sales going on.
It's a common.
I, I, I don't blame them all. They're doing their job. It's just, you have to decide who you want in the shop. You're doing this, that, thinking, and, uh, it's a common, it's a, it's not, I'm not saying it's wrong. But.
Should we ask?
Also, that's saying, why would we just jump into this?
Should we ask a few village employees what their thoughts are? You're the ones who would read.
Well, I think.
Well, they're here.
I think it's beneficial to the village employees. But I, but I, I guess, but, um, why wouldn't one of them? I, I, you know, what, what are you looking at? On your help?
Uh, for mine, it's kind of.
Because what this really gears to is these ten thousand dollar valuables that somebody discovered that they really are paying through the nose and they thought they had health insurance and this is kind of a gap coverage. And we've already got a pretty attractive policy.
For full-time ways, that's the other.
It has less value.
Yes.
It's hard on the.
The other caveat is what it's done to part time board members, the ones who were.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, uh, now that has, uh, Reverend Sucey pointed out, now it's got a full number. Well, I mean, that's their job, right?
Yeah.
Get cross-selling.
Yeah.
I have no complaints about the process here. Okay, so you know where I stand on it.
Well, we need some kind of action on it. Whether to table it or to go with it or.
I don't know if we table it.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Uh, no, but not indefinitely.
For, for one month? If we can decide one month.
I think one month.
Three days. Okay. Guys, well, look, if, you know, if, even though it's free, uh, it's gonna look like we do support it. If we let them come in, I mean, there's.
That's a big factor.
I know, it is.
Thanks for the fact.
So, yeah.
It's not.
So I guess I'd like a month to think about, do we not give our employees that impression that we support them with Liberty National?
Will we come back at the first meeting in August then, so you can have that?
If that.
That's going to be. That's everything. Okay, we have a motion second. All papers say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Um, there's a hearing, uh, I don't think the parks and rec, especially in consideration of building parks, portable restroom.
Can we take that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, this is discussed at the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, adding an additional four hot tubs to the village park. Um, given that there are, um, not a ton of options at all out over the day. Obviously, the village hall is open at a certain time. Um, and chamber bathroom is not twenty-four seven yet. We're still working through their D and R agreements to be able to have security cameras there. So the committee recommended adding four hot tubs in the park. We just find out it'll be seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for, for the rest of the season. Um, so, yeah.
And I don't think we decided the locations.
Well, we have talked about between the basketball courts and the, and the playground. Now, kind of by the side, I want, because it's kind of halfway between and, and the farm away from the, from the, you know, it's, it's not that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, people in the parks and swimming.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what we have.
Yeah.
You're right.
Top of all.
You're right. They smell.
So kind of like in between the pool and the basketball courts there, or by the pool? Just, I, just by, I want to make sure that I know, so.
No, it needs to be by the, uh.
By the side of the.
Cause of.
Right, 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 yeah.
It would be west of the basketball courts, it's just a, a little.
We've got a lot of waste area down, uh, at the fountain, at the, at the pizza bar, between the
pool.
The pool, uh.
Yeah.
Filter facility, yeah.
I want to keep it off of the other street. Because that gets more traffic than for them in our, for, for. May not.
Joe, you can take the location.
We don't pay about the.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not involved.
Yeah.
Beautiful traffic.
Yeah.
We'll just let Joe pick a location.
That sounds good. Yeah, I think that's what.
Joe, just let me know, I'll call.
All right. Should I move? The bathroom? Son of a.
Uh, Park and Rec, turn on. This is my discussion, I would make the motion to the additional portable restroom.
You have one second?
Yeah.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. What's your, all the workers, you got anything to say?
We didn't have anything for a form, so there wasn't any, uh, enough of a forms, but we did have an meeting. Joe, talk a little bit about, you want to talk about the dump and losing non-compliance? The, the issues we have there?
Hi, Ken. Um, so the D and R came in and inspected us. The last time they were inspected, here was before I got here, this brain gal. Um, I showed up, out there at the dump. And gave us a non-compliance, because supposedly we only have the right sign up there. We gotta add more to the sign notes there that we put up for them in the first place. Let's have our D and R number on there in hours of work. Uh, which will be just to, um, say that they have to contact me going from fifth. Second one is, is that we're not supposed to be burning anything under six inches. Which, that's what brush is. And so now we have to apply for, to burn under six inches. Because we don't burn anything, we don't take anything over six inches. And they think that we should be burning stuff six inches or bigger. Um, and the other thing is, they found out about our compost site. Which has been out there for how many years? Can't have it.
What is that?
Can't have compost. Because, yeah.
Right, so that one, that one?
Yeah. So all our dirty loads that we take out there for backup weed.
Where's the.
You tell them that you're. So there's something like that?
Yeah, so then the D and R guy goes, I, well, that was the ash. So the ash, the guy goes to me, goes, uh, you can't, also, you're supposed to be taking the ash out of here. And I said, oh, really? Where am I supposed to take that? So there's not landfill that'll take the ash even around us. And I asked him, what am I supposed to do, ship it into Illinois? Well, yeah. I said, you yourself helped me with this once before, and there's nothing in favor of that. So we can send the ash. So what do you want me to do? And the guy's like, uh, yeah, well, we could apply for, to spread ashes on the site. Of what? On the site. So I gotta apply for that. And then he also said that the most amount that we're supposed to burn is a, is a ten by ten area. And I asked him, has he ever seen a dump truck? Because a dump truck is twelve by sometimes eighteen, sixteen. And I said, one load of brush, is that all I'm supposed to burn? Uh, well, yeah. He said, uh, no, because if I have a tree go down the town, that's could be three, four, ten loads of brush. Said, I'm stacking down here, because I can't, even in town, on the street. Well, I, why get that? So we gotta apply for that again. And I asked him, I said, you know, I understand this, but I said, the last time we did this, there was no problem to the. I hung up the sign and they told us to mow the banks. I said, we've been mowing the banks, we held up a sign, and now all of a sudden they're coming down with all this stuff. I said, where is this coming from? And he said, well, I think the D and R has been slacking. So now we're starting to force. And I'm like, great, thank you. So I've got a bunch of people working, so I'll order the sign so we can be compliant, and I gotta show it to them and see where we get it.
Once you jump through all these hoops, will we okay?
I hope so, as long as they approve them.
That's what I mean by you, Joe.
Yeah.
You fill out that paper.
I'll go over it. What did I get?
Yeah. Everybody we had.
Let me give a tip and.
I'm gonna bring someone back to my house and I'll take care of it.
William, you wanna call up the D and R?
Sure. Okay. I'm glad to.
Uh, what do you do online? Down the park, sidewalk that goes from fourth to third, by the ziggel, oh, is that one?
Yeah, if anybody trimmed their, branch down it. We, you got to be about this load to get underneath it.
We have not, we have not trimmed anything yet, uh, for trees. We've gotta go through every park with the LTE, and they're gonna be trimming so that way we're stumped a lot better. And we have trees down like that, stuff like that, and we just need to be trimmed up again. We do it like every other year, and we need to be...
Speaking of worst, they're gonna mow this week, are they? If it don't miss the rain?
I think they mowed about thirty.
Well, I think they moved, Lauren, last Thursday, Friday, didn't they?
Definitely around the village lawn, I think.
Dude is jealous.
Huh? That's kind of my feeling, too.
But, um...
I know we haven't mowed a lot last week or this week, because now tomorrow, the sprinkler companies coming in to work on it. And I just, we haven't, it's, it's pretty dark in there.
Well, okay. The residents report, anything to the board? You're in none, we are adjourned.
This is close to...